I'd like to call the Monday, February 26th, meeting of the Dalton Select Board to order. Mr. Bishop, would you please join? Lead us in the pledge.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
You're welcome.
Brittany, would you mind doing the roll call, please?
Yes, Mark Schrock.
Here.
Robert Fisher.
Here.
Our founder, Tom Jackson.
Here.
Vice Chair Dan Aska.
Here.
And Excuse in our chair, Joseph Diver, and John Webb.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have the meeting minutes from February 5th, 2024, and February 12th, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve February 5th, 2024 minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
I was absent from that meeting. We may have to... Actually, we have a quorum of who's present, so I believe we can do a vote on that. All right. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And all abstain.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, February 12th, as presented.
I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. This is the time for the public address of the board. On any item listed on the meeting agenda, or on any issue or matter of the town, if you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following: Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company and institution you represent. The public address of the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise, and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair or their designee may answer questions on procedural matters. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make that request at this time. The board chair may grant this request. We are meeting in person and making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we will not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you would like to be sure of participating, please attend in person. Anybody want to address any of the items on the agenda, or anything else this evening in the audience? How about on Zoom? Okay. Next up is approval and execution of quitclaim deed for the Barton property.
Yes, we have Town Council, Catherine Klein, on Zoom with us now, and we have successfully come to very close to the conclusion of this process. The closing is now slated for March 15th, which is... We decided to bring this forward now to get it through. The select board members who aren't here can sign it after the meeting if they so wish, but we'd really like to get moving on it. There are a couple of things to be filled in, but the deed is essentially complete. And I think... Ms. Klein, if you would like to make any comments?
Yeah, it looks, as Tom said, we have closing tentatively scheduled for March 15th. We didn't know that until today, so I thought it would be best to get the deed approved and executed in case we closed more quickly. But it should be... I mean, they don't have, you know, all their due diligence complete at this point, but I don't foresee any problems. And I've submitted the deed for their approval. And this has been a saga. And hopefully, we're coming to the end of that for the town.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve and execute the quitclaim deed for the Barton property.
I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on the matter, gentlemen?
No. Congratulations.
Okay. Hearing none and seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We've got the deed here for the signing of the meeting.
The signature page, if you can sign that before you go.
We'll sign at the end.
Yeah.
And one person's signature does need to be notarized.
Maybe before you leave, we could do it.
So if we can do that now, that would be great.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You, too. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's Dan's twin.
Driver's licenser?
Sure thing.
Just kidding.
Oh. The attorney always asks for your driver's license, so...
We can do a personal...
Okay. Personal recommissions, right?
Yes, yes. No, you're fine. I'll give some tips.
Excellent. Wonderful.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If you want to sign tomorrow, just get out of the way. All right. Next up, we have the 2024 Buddy Walk of the Berkshires, scheduled for Saturday, September 21st, 2024. So I believe we just need an approval by the select board for this.
Yes. I think you have the email in your...
Yep. Right here.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Buddy Walk to be held on September 21st, 2024, Craneville.
Okay. Do I hear a second on that?
Second.
Okay. I imagine it's going to follow the same route as previous years?
Yes, it will. It will. I just want to let you know, this is the 18th annual.
Yeah.
Same place, Craneville School, already got that approved. Sent them the certificate already. The same Buddy Walk route from last year. Same deal, having the fire department there, the police department. I just basically just need you guys to say yea or nay.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for inviting me to your meeting.
Thank you, Christine. I know it was short, but thank you.
Have a great night. Bye-bye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reopen this liquor license board.
Second.
All right. A motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Hutchison, if you would like to explain?
Yeah, I would like to turn it over to Alyssa, as she's the licensing and permitting specialist.
Excellent.
So we received a transfer application for Dave's Country Corner. So now we built in Variety Inc. They have submitted all the proper paperwork. Their attorney was just on here a moment ago, if you had any questions. But it looks like the new owners, Priyanka Patel, they also have a couple of other alcohol licenses throughout Berkshire County. They submitted everything they needed to, so it would just be, you're okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the transfer of alcohol license from Dave Atwell, Dave's Country Corner, to Paraka and Patel, Dalton Variety Incorporated.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for inviting me to your meeting.
Thank you, Christine. I know it was short, but thank you.
Have a great night. Bye-bye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reopen this sewer commission.
So moved. Do I hear a second?
Yes, second.
Okay.
This is the regular semi-annual sewer commissioner's warrant to the collector. The numbers did go up a little bit. This is directly traceable to the number of metered accounts using groundwater. This is how we measure.
Quickly interrupt. Procedural matter, all in favor of opening as a sewer commission?
The county.
Aye. Yeah, we didn't do that. We just did a motion and second.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Now we're open.
Yeah, so that's it. It went up a little bit, but that's directly traceable to the increase in metered water use.
Yeah, which the attached report shows. Yeah.
Have you ever got a firm grasp on groundwater infiltration? Have you ever gotten to finalize how much groundwater is going in? This costs us money for this.
Yes, and we're in the midst of the mitigation. Now, they did some in the fall, and then we're just waiting for spring to come for them to finish the project. They're lining some pipes, replacing some pipes. So that is in process.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to sign and approve the warrant for the sewer.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Yeah, we have the... I think that's the one to sign. It's this one here.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reopen this sewer commission.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, we have the acceptance of $100,000 grant through the Small Bridges Program for the repair of Grange Hall Road Bridge over Barton Brook.
Yes, they took an awful long time to get this grant out the door, but we're pleased to get it. But I can tell you a little bit more if you're interested in it. I think you apply less small or summer.
Last May. Last May, I moved on. But we got approved. I kind of figured we didn't get approved. Got an email, and we were approved, so. It's just for the engineering, for two cloverets to go under just in between Patricia and Audrey.
Okay.
Right by Snoopy Hall.
Yeah.
And it's for the engineering. It's 100% them. They've bid everything out, zero cost.
Yeah. Excellent.
Great work again, bud.
Very nice.
Mr. Chairman, I accept a motion that we accept a grant of $100,000 through the Small Bridges Program for Grange Hall Road over Barton Brook.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I'll just take the sign.
Yeah, we've got this one in the folder here.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reopen this sewer commission.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Yeah, we have the... I think that's the one to sign. It's this one here.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reopen this sewer commission.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, we have the acceptance of $100,000 grant through the Small Bridges Program for the repair of Grange Hall Road Bridge over Barton Brook.
Yes, they took an awful long time to get this grant out the door, but we're pleased to get it. But I can tell you a little bit more if you're interested in it. I think you apply less small or summer.
Last May. Last May, I moved on. But we got approved. I kind of figured we didn't get approved. Got an email, and we were approved, so. It's just for the engineering, for two cloverets to go under just in between Patricia and Audrey.
Okay.
Right by Snoopy Hall.
Yeah.
And it's for the engineering. It's 100% them. They bid everything out, zero cost.
Yeah. Excellent.
Great work again, bud.
Very nice.
Mr. Chairman, I accept a motion that we accept a grant of $100,000 through the Small Bridges Program for Grange Hall Road over Barton Brook.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, bud.
Okay. Next up, we have FY '25 budgets. Mr. Hutchison.
Yeah, we have Jean-Gene Grohl here to introduce the assessor's budget, and there was a bit of a last-minute change, in case you saw an earlier version. We have a newer version for you now, which is in your packets.
Okay. You can have a seat, absolutely. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, as Tom just mentioned, if you had received a copy of our budget earlier, you would notice from looking at whatever paperwork you received this evening, that there's been a slight change. I was initially looking to add an additional four hours to the clerk's position, so that we could have a little bit more office time open to the public. Unfortunately, that is not going to work out at this point in time, so I've removed that from the budget with the result that it's going down a little over $4,000. Other than that, everything is the same. The hours are the same. The salaries have only been changed by the wage matrix. And down on our expenses, the professional training, I did increase a little bit this year. We found out that we fell short. The MAAO, which is the Massachusetts Association of Assessing Officers, increased their cost to attend a class, so we were a little bit short there. I've increased it to cover. The contracted services with Patriot Properties, we're entering in our third year of a third year contract in anticipation of the revaluation that's going to take place this year, fiscal '25. That was all figured in. So the contracted price this year is the same as it's been in the prior two years. And then the support has gone up a little bit for Patriot Properties. It's actually gone up $345. Everything else remains the same, as far as Cartographic, who is our mapping company. I'm sorry, they're now CAI Technologies. They're our mapping company. They've stayed the same, so their budget's flat. I did also increase the mileage, approximately $300 this year, because again, we didn't have enough money in the mileage account to cover the cost to go to school for our newest assessor to take the class.
Okay.
So that basically is the budget.
All right.
TA, and great job, Jean.
Yeah, great job, Jean. Thank you. I don't think there's any questions.
Okay.
It's very straightforward. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
TA.
Thank you.
All right. Next, budget.
Yes, we're...
Do we want to address any of the budgets for people who are in attendance now first, or...
Yeah. Sure. And we're not doing a 142 revaluation. That's a part effect from earlier years from now, contract account that actually appears under contracted services in the assessor's budget.
Okay. Got it. All right. Well, we could do town clerk and elections?
Yeah, I got a bunch of questions on this one. I'm just kidding.
All right. Come on up.
All right. So you guys did my registrar's budget a couple of weeks back, because that one actually comes in at, it falls below the $20,000, so we don't have to tell about that one. So do you want to do town clerk or elections first? Your preference?
Town clerk.
Town clerk?
Town clerk, sounds good.
Okay. Town clerk. So nothing crazy here. The wage increases for the wage matrix, everything expense-wise, stayed the same.
Okay.
Just good to meet.
TA on that. Thank you.
You got it. And then for elections? So for this one, I actually printed something else off, because I wanted to follow along a little bit. So the elections budget, I guess when you look at it firsthand, when you go to bottom line, salaries, expenses, and the total budget, it looks like there's a pretty big increase. That's very deceiving, and the only reason it shows that way is because of the cyclical nature of the job and the fact that we have three elections this year. So last year, we only had the two elections, and this budget is based strictly on elections. So just to show you, so it looks a little bit less harsh, they printed you the budget from four years ago, just for this one, just so you can see. So this was from FY '21. So this was the last time we had the presidential primaries and the presidential elections. So you can see the bottom line.
Yeah.
I think it's like $22,000 overall.
Mm-hmm.
And this was four years ago.
Yeah.
So when you look at this, you can clearly see, even though last year's budget came in at just over $18,000, the increase to the '24 is pretty small from the '22 that it was four years ago.
Okay.
The only thing really that increased in this budget is the equipment reprogramming and maintenance. And this, I actually changed just two weeks or so ago. So our vendor, who's LHS and Associates, and they take care of our tabulators, they do our census, they do our ballots, their contract increased. So it's going to be an extra $150 per tabulator per election.
Okay.
So the increase doesn't start until January, so it doesn't, it's not a huge increase, but we have the three tabulators. We have precinct one, precinct two, and we have a spare. We use all three of them. We always have the spare ready to roll, just in case. Not that we'll hopefully need it. So that kind of just shows the increase in that. Aside from that, void rentals, you'll see that's down from $660. That's...
So that's zero now, no rental, because we've moved running here.
Right. Yeah, so that saved us a little bit.
It was $990 when we had three elections, so...
It was.
It saved about $1,000 on the budget.
Yeah, yeah, it does. Yeah, it was $330 for the CRA per election.
Okay.
I will eventually, actually, next year, I'll make that line item disappear, but I just kept it in there so you could see it.
I've got a question for you, Heather.
Yeah, sure.
Do you have enough in there for all the mail-ins that you've got required? Are you going to have enough money in there to do all that? Because I understand there's quite a few people that requested mailing budgets for everything.
Yeah, a lot, a lot, a lot of people have. We've been prevaring postcards for the last couple of weeks. In terms of the sheer number of folks that are requesting them, I'll be able to give you a number by the end of the week or so, because we're still accepting them. Labor-wise, very lucky to have a very able-bodied assistant, and she's killing it.
Okay.
And we're both putting the hours that we need to, to make it happen.
Okay.
You probably will hear next week from, or no, not next week, I think the tax collector and postage budget are for March 11th. You'll probably hear from Alyssa, who does the postage. That's under her budget.
Oh, yeah.
It's definitely affecting the postage. It makes a big, big difference. So everything the state sent out to folks, the postcards, they can mail them back to us free of charge, because the state paid for that postage, and your ballots, too. So the envelope that they put in the mail to send their ballot back to us after they voted, that's paid by the state as well.
Okay.
But the ballot that I have to mail to them in order for them to fill it out is not paid by the state, so we're biting that. And it's almost a fucking envelope. This postage just went up. Yeah. So I think you'll definitely see an increase. Alyssa and I have talked about it numerous times. We're definitely on the same page.
Okay.
The state's going to provide some reimbursement, as they have in years past, and I think they're pretty on top of the fact that it is causing a lot of smaller towns a burden, not only as far as the labor, but as far as the expenses. But people seem to be really happy about it and taking advantage of, you know, having it be a super easy way to vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
TA.
TA. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Do, um... Transfer station? Handling that, or...
Certainly. I mean, we follow...
It's just a quick change, because we already looked at this one.
We did, we looked at it, yeah. It's just more of a typo on there.
Yeah. Okay.
At the bottom for, for the service.
Yes, the contracted services were always meant to be level funded. However, there had been an encumbrance last year that had carried over, so that the figure that it looked like they started with wasn't actually the budget figure. It was the budget figure plus the encumbrance. So we've taken that out now. So contracted services are down to $159,900.
It was like $14,000 less than what was proposed a few weeks ago.
Okay. Well, that's good.
Yeah.
All right.
No, it does, but it's not...
Well, if that was the only change, then...
TA.
TA. All right. Thanks, bud. Okay. Mr. Hutchison, you can choose the next one. I guess going back to, I guess telecommunications, maybe?
Yes, and let me just notice, let me just mention, I think Jeff Birch had tried to get on the call. He's been out, unfortunately.
Okay.
And he was going to be doing the town building maintenance and the town hall budgets, but apparently, he's not able to be with us this evening, so we'll reschedule.
Okay. That's fine.
I thought you designed it for you.
No problem.
He was on for a short period, but...
So we'll do telecommunications and IT services.
And that's something Alyssa's covering.
Okay. Excellent.
Yeah, for the telecommunications, both of these budgets, Pat has done the test, so working with Tom and Jeff on these, Sandy a bit. So the telecommunications, we have going down a little bit due to the fiber ring. One of the monthly charter internet bills is now on. So besides that, everything pretty steady. The web access professional services, we're working on the new website, so we don't know for sure how much it will be, but currently, this is what we pay monthly, so.
Okay. Well, the budget is going down, so I definitely support that, so thank you.
TA.
Yeah, TA on that. Thank you. All right.
And then the information technology services, we're working with Vernatus. They did an audit of everyone's computers, and it appears we will need to replace 29 of the computers, because we're going to upgrade them to the newest Windows. So we're breaking that up over two years, but the cost of that will be asked for at town meeting. But just, I think, no, we didn't even increase it. So, I mean, it was just a little note that we put on there to keep it level funded. We don't really know how much Vernatus is going to charge us to do all the installation, but...
Okay.
Is this something in time you thought about using free cash, or... For the computers, replacing the computers?
Yes, we are going to be, it is one of the items that's on the list. That's for a complete upgrade to Windows 11 for half of our computers. And I don't know that we have matched those to the ones that we would, that are sort
Is this something in time you thought about using free cash, or... For the computers, replacing the computers?
Uh, yes, we are going to be u, uh, it is one of the items that's on the, uh, the list. That's for a complete upgrade to Windows eleven for half of our computers. And I don't know that we have matched them, matched those to the ones that we would, that are sort of on a normal rotation, but we could do that. Um, it could be a potential areas of savings.
Right.
It's true. Uh, now, that said, eventually, we'll go back to the level that this is funded at when, when we've, uh, when we need to start replacing the ones that we're gonna do through free cash. And we're not gonna do all of them through free cash. Well, some of our computers are already Windows eleven compliant, um, but I'm guessing that the ones that we would replace first would be ones that were not.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, now, that said, the hardware also includes printers, um, you know, monitors, keyboards, whatever, whatever we might need, so, um, we might be able to, uh, to cut that substantially.
So the twenty, twenty thousand...
Oh, oh, this is, this is decreasing due to new computer schedule referred.
Yes.
Yeah, I think the five thousand is, is what we decided on we would need for printers and, uh, you know, assorted hardware that was not main print. That, that's, that's a low amount. We'll be asking for tw- uh, twenty thousand or a little more over the, for the, uh, when the, the major Windows eleven replacement, which gotta happen over two years.
And that's first of two annual requests on the money articles here.
Yeah, yeah.
And from free cash.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on that?
No.
Okay.
TA.
TA. Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Next up, we have, we've got a few, uh, items related to the budget that I believe are just on the agenda as we go through budget season. Money articles, DPW, building and grounds, town manager, accounts with the greatest proposed rises in the overall budget, so, uh, Mr. Hutchison, did you want to address, um, any of the money articles, um, this evening?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Uh, especially I have, uh, DPW's mine and one other...
Okay.
That, uh, are gonna be, that we should, uh, start talking about. Let me just make some notes on these. Yeah, again, Jeff is not here to speak to the, uh, buildings and grounds items, uh, but, but if he can, if he can come up, he can start with that. Uh, one thing that we can, uh, that we can mention is, that, what is just the... Something else to spend on. You'll love this, this, this is a sidewalk paver. Um, we just got this quoted, uh, and so, uh, so we're, we're considering re-prioritizing some of these items. That said, uh, again, it looks as though we're gonna have a substantial amount of free cash this year, and I would not, um, I, I would base any decision that you make on whether or not we actually need, you think we need the, uh, money spent, rather than do we have enough money to spend? Because we do have enough money. It's a question of, um, whether you think it's, it's a priority for the town.
For the sidewalk paver, it came up, the sidewalk's been a pretty hot topic going out, because we have some money in the lot and disrepair, should be said, thank you.
That's what it was.
Okay. Um, so, I just, I reached out a few weeks ago after, you know, looking around at some of the work we need to do, and, uh, I have been, in the fall, I seen Pittsfield, Pittsfield's got a brain of, so I called him, and talked to him about it a little bit, and, uh, he gave me the contact, so he finally got back to us at the end of last week with the price. That can go down to doing a two-foot little thing, or a stretch of lap top, or about a six-foot. So I can use it on the road to do patches.
Patches.
Like, you know, you get certain, where you just get the old ruts, and just wanna straighten them out here and there, so I think it won't be just for the sidewalks. It would help us in other places. I mean, it can't pave a whole road with it, but it would be something that definitely improved, but we can do one of them.
How much quicker are we be able to repair sidewalks with this thing?
A lot.
So, man-hours would we reduce to then?
Yep, and it'll fall a lot nicer, too, yeah.
Yeah.
That, for sure. You know, we do, definitely, you know, we pick a few streets every, however we decide to do it. We do a little bunch of...
That's cool.
I think it'd be a good option, instead of trying to do the concrete work, which is, it's so time-consuming, and at least probably two and a half times as much as doing the lap top.
Well, payback, for, for this thing's very short, though.
Yeah, I think it would be for us, yeah. And so we'll see. But I figured I'd bring it to you as attention, just to think about everything, it's very useful.
Well, no, you guys, when I'm...
Not, not opposed to it, I...
I mean, the motion, we accept it, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Uh, but it, it will be important to consider in the context of the other asks, so if you can just go down that...
Yeah, see, um, the, the list here, the Orchard Road thing...
I guess nobody seconded the motion.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, I will, yes, true. I definitely, yeah.
Okay.
Can you hold on to it?
Yeah, I'm sure. Here, we'll just hold. Unhold. Um, so, first one in the list is Orchard Road, um, final design for the sidewalk, um, and some construction. So Tom kind of came up with this number for it. Um, if they're doing that now, they're gonna be doing that once they finish up, putting everything up to bid for the road itself.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm gonna put in, for the big one out of the road, I'm gonna do the section of the sidewalk when we're doing the drainage work, which is pretty much the bridge to PZ, a little bit further, because the drainage works can be a lot better side, um, where the sidewalk would be. And then that, the two ends, they're gonna put up the bid as like a, like a second, like an alternate, we have the money for it. If not, this would be the money to do support, I believe, is what Tom stopped us here, so...
Okay.
We need the whole sidewalk, and that's the whole...
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to do there, because there definitely is a road beneath the sidewalk.
That's an important road, important, um, you know, for pedestrians.
Yeah, it's a tough one. It's narrow, it's tough.
And do the cut across, uh, from nine to eight?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. And so that's that one. Um, the transfer station design is something that, um, I talked a bit about.
Yeah.
It needs, transportation's in rough shape, like concrete wa, like, needs to be rebuilt, more or less, is the issue. And we had had that, uh, grant a few years back, where they came and gave us some options. And, uh, Tom just reached out to, you know, can you, can you give us a quote of what it would be, and give us an engineered plan of what it would cost to do, when we, I think this is what kind of show up, which from the left, uh, so that's what that quote is, so there's that. Um, the two, the next one would be the two garage doors. We've got, what's, seven garage doors on the building, we're down to the last two that haven't been changed probably since the seventies.
Yeah.
And they're, fair, pretty literally. Uh, we didn't, we couldn't use one of them for a while, um, this winter, so I intend to make sure for it, you know. That's what that one is. Skate park engineering is kind of, this, this is more, Tom came up with this, I, I know I talked to you Dan a little bit about it one night. So this was kind of, Tom kind of threw that number out there for that, to look into that. Pine Grove Repair is, uh, insecurity, more or less, is the cam. We got one camera up over there now, which does probably half the park, which went up probably in October, November. Um, so we get a lot of problems, especially in the, we get a lot of abandoned, well, the place gets trashed. I'd like to be able to open the bathrooms up, you know, as opposed to househouses.
And I neglect to mention in this, uh, it's also repairs to the wooden structure.
Yeah, there's, there's some of the building needs obstruct, some of the, the big concession stand needs a lot of attention at the moment.
Okay.
The bathrooms are fixed, we fixed them a couple of years ago, they're just, they're repaired and defined, they're just, we never opened them, they're never been washed. And to put a few more cameras over there, I think a couple cameras probably will create it. Um, and to just do some work over there for the, the building, we had, plus, the other parks are, you know, we have buildings as well, and put, put a little in the green ridge and then the, a couple sheds at the, um, chain line. So that was that one. Uh, the rec, the recycling containers were just, those are just dumpsters, that's just two dumpsters, to slowly start making some things are all over there, similar to, like what, that's the most there are. Unfortunately, that's the most there is, just two dumpsters, two of them for recycling, and the transfer station now.
Okay.
That's what those, that's what that price is. Um, obviously, mining and painting the basketball court is, you know, it just became, I had hoped that we were gonna be able to afford that in my regular budget last summer, and just a thousand dollars, just a little bit more than I had in my budget for that, so that became an issue, so it's, it's nice and paved over there, but it's not been paved yet. Only a little piperball, I know, too, so they can use, I saw them planted in summer a couple times with it, so...
Hmm.
And then, Slapshop Shed is, is Tom's dream, you know, the transfer station.
It's a tongue twister.
And, uh, so that's what that is there. And then the leaf doors, something, um, is for, for us to maintain the, the parks and, uh, actually, we use another rope, it's a bigger one, we don't, we usually have ones that just go on our backs. That one goes to our little machine driving around on the sidewalks.
Hmm.
So we can kind of maneuver the dirt roads and little ditches out and all sorts of different things.
Oh, okay.
The parks and then the cemetery as well, too.
Yeah.
It's, it'd be all over the place. Um, it's actually a lot cheaper than I thought it would be, but those are kind of the ones on my list, we had on my list for the DPW on this.
Just back up to the repair, uh, Pine Grove Park repair rehabilitation, including security. The twenty thousand, did I hear you say that that's also for, um, s- some of the buildings at Chamberlain, or?
Chamberlain, yes, it's all the parks, it's kind of all the parks, it's kind of a...
Okay, it's not just Pine Grove.
Right, it needs to, you know, some of the other parks need some attention, too. We just actually, last week, fixed a little dugout, so the Chamberlain was pretty much fell in, so we built that, so...
Okay, all right, very good.
Or making a way around.
All right, um...
And then the other thing that's not typed on there, because this morning, was the sidewalk paver.
The sidewalk paver?
That's why it's not on there.
Yeah.
And at this point, I'd like to second, Mr. Bush's motion, that is on there.
A motion has been made and seconded, um, so we can discuss the sidewalk paver. What's the lifespan of the piece of equipment? How long will it last?
If you maintain it, it probably will, probably, can't see if in twenty, twenty-five years, I don't know, you know, it'd be hard to...
That's cheap money for that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And give us the ability to, uh, how, how, how much quicker do you think you can do sidewalks? How do you...
I mean, it'd be, it'd be a lot faster, like, um, you know, the one thing we're gonna, we'll come into, I think, more is we're gonna have to, we'll probably out back, have to stack up the concrete, and have some of them crush it at some point, for us, because we're gonna have a lot. I think we'll be able to get, I think we'll be able to do a lot in summer.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, with the equipment, the guys we got. The summer help, when I have summer help, I get a couple extra hands.
Okay.
Uh, so, it would definitely help. Obviously, we have other things going on, too, but...
Yeah.
We would definitely be able to do some of that, you know, when we have time, should be...
Sidewalks are a priority, and, uh, we've been hearing, obviously, from residents that they want to see this...
Yes.
...be addressed, and this will help us do that. Uh, I have a member of the audience with their hand raised.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I just wanted, I thought I heard Bud say that this is using asphalt instead of concrete, is that right here?
Correct, yep.
So it would be changing potentially concrete sidewalks to asphalt sidewalks?
Correct.
And changing the character of the building quite a bit, potentially?
Well, there's a lot of, there's lap top sidewalks in town.
I know, and I've seen, like, the new one they put down by, you know, Main Street and...
Yeah, I mean, they have some in town, some on Main Street that...
Oh, on Main Street as well, right?
Yep, there's, there's some places here and there to do, um, but yeah, it is something. I mean, if we do concrete, it's...
It's expensive.
Very expensive, very time-consuming.
Time-consuming.
That's, that's what comes out, mainly.
Okay, just wanted to just check on it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um... So motion's been made and seconded to add the, uh, paver, sidewalk paver to the DPW money articles or, uh, equipment requests. Any other discussion?
No.
No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I, let's, let's get it added, um, obviously, it needs to be approved by...
Yeah.
...the voters.
Yeah.
If they think it's a priority, then they'll support it, um, but I think, I think it's worth putting it forth.
Another.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
All right, Bud, thank you very much.
Thanks, Bud.
And for town manager items, uh, the first one is repayment of the deposit on the garden property made by the first bidder. Because that was not completed over the course of the fiscal year, uh, that money closed out into free cash, or needs to be voted out of free cash and back into, um, back to the, uh, bidder. Uh, the new computer hardware is upgraded to be able to handle Windows eleven as Windows ten starts going the way of old software. And, again, this is the first of two requests, uh, roughly the same amount of money based on today's dollars. We don't know exactly what the cost will be next time, but this would be for half of those units.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, grant application funds for Walker Brook, um, these FEMA, uh... Building Resilience and Infrastructure in Communities, I believe. Uh, they're, they're BRIC now, they used to be Pre-Disaster Mitigation.
Okay.
And now it's a, it's a different program. They're very involved grant applications, involve calculating benefit cost analyses based on engineering studies and things like that. So it takes an engineering firm to actually create the grant application. I had tried to get, um, firms to bid on the speculation that they might get the grant, and, you know, it was interesting.
They don't want to spend the time...
Right.
...on speculation.
Right, so they figure they can develop the grant proposal. It can still take years to get funded, if it gets funded, there's a limited amount of money available for these projects, and again, in a, in a community I worked in previously, it took four years to get it funded, but, uh, we were able to use an engineering firm and get it better and better every year, and they'd say, well, fix this, fix that, how can we get that benefit a little bit more than the cost, so it becomes eligible for funding?
Mm-hmm, okay.
So that's what that's for. And that, that was a, um, estimate thrown out, uh, in, close to, uh, a couple of, of estimates that were given by people saying, well, what could you do this for? And they were saying, well, we could probably do it for, you know, this amount or that amount, so I will rebid with that as a, uh, as a figure.
Okay.
Uh, the next one, we're actually gonna cover later...
Okay.
...in the, uh, in the agenda.
Number thirteen?
Uh, on the fund and the last one.
On the agenda.
But the easement is one of, actually now, um, three easements, we know, we need two for the, uh, Orchard Brook project. So, um, this one is for...
We approved this previously.
Yes. Well, we don't have enough, we don't have a dollar value on it yet, but I am, I'm getting it appraised, and we'll...
Okay.
...talk a little bit more about that in my update.
Okay.
Uh, so those are the, um, items, except for the two that we'll be talking about a little bit later.
All right, um...
And we don't have, uh, Jeff to go with the buildings and grounds ones, let me see. Uh, there's, there's one that's pretty easy money for shredding, uh, Bud has actually arranged for a shredder to come in next September, and, uh, we'd been talking earlier about arranging one just for town hall, because we have an enormous number of boxes that we can now shred, they're, they're past the state's schedule for how, how long we have to retain them, and that's what we calculated, uh, would be the cost to cover that, about forty-five hundred dollars. Then, uh, I still have to firm up with, uh, Jeff, a plan for roof section reinforcement. The roof over the library, uh, is not in, uh, it needs extra support. We did have a study done, it was based on the idea that we could put solar panels up, and so we asked, well, can the roof support solar panels? And the report came back that all sections of our roofs in town hall are overstressed. Um, so not only can't we put anything up, they're already not as reinforced as they should be, so I, I'm still talking to him about what a figure for that might be, uh, we figure that would at least take care of the, the library section, and we could, we could work on other sections as, uh, you know, as that money allowed.
Mm-hmm. And this is just for the library section, this request?
Uh, well, we don't have a quote for anything yet, um, so that number is, is still very, uh, up in the air.
Okay.
But that is a, it's just an, an ask to that. The, uh... Engineering for lifts for town hall, we are having options looked at to see whether or not, you know, we can have lifts as opposed to an elevator, to make it accessible. And there are various issues with that. The main entrance of the town hall that's closer to Main Street is fairly narrow, and it would involve a substantial rebuilding of that section to be able to allow a lift as well as people coming in and out. Plus, you go up a first to one level, and then you have to go up again into town hall.
Mm-hmm.
On the other side, by the police station, there's a fairly wide staircase, and there may be extra room, um, there may be another six inches, which is really all we need. There may be another six inches, which is really all we need, in the wall behind that, if there were going to be something that could go up to the second floor and down to the police station, which would be a good way of doing that. You know, and we won't know, that study's still out. We won't know what they're thinking of for options, but those were a couple that, you know, occurred to staff.
Okay.
So we really don't have a good number for that yet, but I'm expecting to get that report relatively soon. So this is just more or less of a placeholder. And then the, the heat pumps, also an estimate. Oh, and that would just be for the engineering for the lift. The lift itself would probably be on the order of half a million dollars to purchase and install. The heat pumps for the third floor, that the, you may recall our former building, the ground super tenet was concerned about the age of the boiler, of one of the boilers, and that's the boiler that, that serves that third floor. There are other considerations besides actually heating the space. We need to insulate it. In order to insulate it, we need to get rid of the mountain tube electrical that's in there. But this was a figure that we did actually consider to be relatively realistic, the $65,000 for all of that work in order to install heat pumps in the rooms on the third floor and take care of the additional work, insulation, electrical, and that other construction work. So those were the ones that he's more or less taken the lead on, and that's what I can tell you about at this point.
So the $65,000 covers that additional work?
We believe it would, yes. That's a firmer estimate than the lift estimate and we, or the roof section reinforcement. We could get a certain amount done, but we don't know exactly how much it would cover. But we do need to start work on shoring up the roof at Town Hall.
Okay.
Even if it's not gonna have solar panels on it.
Any questions, other members of the board? Anything else to add to the money articles?
No, I think we're gonna cover the rest of them next time.
Yeah, I think.
You know, we can go, you know.
It's important to know we can come back to any item that we so choose, or we can ask further questions, you know, offline from the meeting as well, and
And ultimately, it'd be a question of what goes on the warrant, so.
Yeah. Has the finance committee reviewed the money articles yet?
They are reviewing them as they, as they come along, yes.
When is our next meeting, Tom?
When is the next? This is coming a couple of days.
Okay.
And I just put down the accounts of the greatest proposed rises. The, just for another look at that, I think the transfer station has now dropped off the list because, or where it's dropped down because of that, that change of the contracted service is not going up $14,000. So that's now down more towards $14,000 than $29,000.
Okay.
I think others are pretty much where they are, but that's, and again, just the note that 70% of the dollar amount of the rises over $1,000, and again, this is just, we got a lot of little ones that may be going up under $1,000. They can add up, but not, this is just a one pager of over $1,000. Out of those, 70% are
External.
External.
Factors beyond our control.
To our decision making.
Yeah. So we've got $225,195 that's internal or within our control increases?
Yeah, it's for, yeah, and, and again, only the numbers in green are numbers that have actually been presented yet. So we're not, we don't have final figures for insurance or debt, or schools, of course.
Yeah.
And those are the three categories that are external.
Okay. So when I'm looking at this budget review schedule here, Tom, I'm not seeing, okay, budgets, no, I'm not seeing the Wednesday, that would be Wednesday, the 28th, right?
Yes.
Not seeing that on the schedule here.
Yeah, this is, this is an older version of that schedule, sorry.
Okay. What budgets are we reviewing on Wednesday? So you just said.
Finance committee.
Finance, oh, finance committee is. I thought you said we were. I was very
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. No, no, I thought I was being
I was definitely confused, but I was trying, I was trying to, you know, kind of suss it out a little bit to see.
No, no.
Because I wasn't seeing it on
I think we're, we're doing pretty well, actually. We will have a lot on the 11th.
Thanks for telling me we don't have a meeting on Wednesday. That's awesome. I was already preparing, like
Yeah, and
He's preparing how he's gonna get out of it.
Yeah, I know.
Don't worry, because I was too.
We all were.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's, it's the finance committee on Wednesday. Okay, thank you.
It came after a question about what is
Yeah, I understand.
About the finance committee's reviews.
All right. So, question is, are we having a special meeting on Monday, March 4th? This is on the schedule. Additional consideration of budgets if necessary.
I think the only ones that we're pushing forward at this point are the building maintenance in Town Hall.
Okay. So we'll be reviewing, we'll have those on the Monday, March 11th meeting?
Correct.
As well as any additional discussions we might want to have on money articles or the overall budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think with that in mind I don't
And then I just put the overall budget on, just to give you the latest, the latest sheet, which is great. Things are, things are coming down. At the very last page, we're now reducing our excess levy capacity only by $57,000. Again, that might go up or down, you know, depending on, on the budgets that come in. But that's a, a rough estimate, and it's way better than the 180 that we started with.
It is.
So, so things are definitely improving. This is the benefits of estimating conservatively to start out with. And again, a lot of this will depend on, on the Central Berkshire budget, because they, their final budget usually does come down a bit from their preliminary budget.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how much that's gonna happen this year, because their preliminary budget was, it was not as much as it was last year, was preliminary. But I have no idea what they're gonna come out with. So, and that will be, I think that's March 14th, yeah. So again, after the next meeting, which is, which is odd.
Okay, well, we'll have Monday, March 18th. That could be a special
Right. Yeah.
Based on CBRSD budget, sign the warrant, and potentially invite the finance committee if needed? Is that, that seems to be a note on that, finance joint?
Yeah, that, I don't think that's
Okay, that's fine. We have two more meetings to consider these budgets, I suppose, and we're almost done with the process, so that's a good thing. Good job on closing that gap. What did we start with? You said it was 180?
180,000.
And we've reduced
Yeah, and, you know, it's, it's nothing that I did.
Well, it was a group, yeah, it was across the board.
But we, you know, we estimated conservatively, and as budgets came in, they came in a little bit under what we thought they might, so that's, that's all good.
Yep.
It's, it's not as good as we might like. Well, you know, that said, if we get, you know, the, the schools are down now for what is it, sort of sort of in, in the neighborhood of a 3.5% rise. If they came down to a 3% rise, 3.5, or it would be 2.94. If it came down half a percent, we take another $50,000 off of this decreased excess levy capacity. So it's very sensitive to what the school budget's gonna be. If it came, if they came down to 2.5, we would be moving our excess levy capacity back up again, so.
Okay.
It's all good.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on budgets for this evening? Okay. Let's move on to the acceptance of the fourth quarter franchise fee for Dalton Community Cable.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the fourth quarter franchise fees for Dalton Community Cable Association in the amount of $28,731.94 in transfer to
Second. Yeah.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Next, we have a discussion of possibility of a housing rehabilitation fund. Mr. Hutchison?
Yes, this was something that came up, I think, I think it was Joe Duffer's idea, that isn't it a shame that we condemn houses for, you know, things like hoarding? And when it gets to a point where, where the house is not accessible, or, you know, other things also tend to go wrong in houses that are not being cared for that way. So, you know, how would, you know, if we were to have some kind of a fund to help people clean up, if they agreed to have their house cleaned up, which is another problem, what would that loan fund look like? So I just did some thinking, and this is pretty much a first draft of, well, not a first draft, but a first draft that I'm showing around, so, an early draft of what that might look like. And as I alluded to earlier, some people have problems with their house, and they're not interested in having anybody help them clean it up. It's a very personal thing, and that really goes beyond what our health agent is tasked with doing. And she's actually been doing a lot of that work, but it's not something that she's trained to do or, you know, is actually part of her job. She's just doing it because she is trying to help people, you know, do as much as they can before it gets to that point. We're in process with one of those houses right now, where a person has a little bit of extra time if they want to do what they need to do in order to make something happen. But sometimes having a little money available, a fund available, could make a difference. That said, based on the amount of time that she's spent and the amount of time she could have spent with a number of these houses, it seems to both of us that she's not only, you know, not trained to do it, but it really is taking a toll on her work in general. And she really believes that it would require another assistance from some other staff. And that was one of the ways that the idea of some kind of social worker came into the discussion. So that's why these two were, were, you know, I was, I was gonna post them as related items. So this is really 13 and 14.
Mm-hmm.
Sort of, you know, more or less together, because, yes, there's a fund, but it's, it takes a lot to administer a fund, especially if it's public money. And you want to make sure it's being used well, and it's being overseen, and people are paying attention to what's going on, and scheduling cleaners and working with the person and all of that. And that actually takes an awful lot of time. And the housing stuff is, and I think you heard her earlier, the housing stuff is kind of burning her out because she's asking for somebody else specifically to help just with the inspections, let alone the work to try to keep some, keep a house from getting condemned, or keep somebody from being evicted as a result of it being condemned. You know, because it's never a good time to get evicted. And mostly, we're talking about people who are elderly and not really able to do a lot for themselves. Sometimes they have family who are willing to help. Sometimes they have family who have their own interests in mind. Sometimes they have only far-flung family. And, you know, we worked, we've been working for over a year, both she and I, with someone in town who's, whose brother lives in Florida. So he's not able to go to housing court, he's not able to really take part. I mean, Zoom is great, but, you know, there are practical matters as well. So this is nothing really to, you know, decide, but I thought I'd at least start the conversation about what it would take to actually have a fund like that that would work, that would be accountable, and that would be useful. So I came up with these two short pieces as a start in helping the board think about what would be involved in that effort.
Okay. Thank you. How many homes do we have currently in this situation that we're aware of that our health agent is working with?
Well, the total of houses that are or could are, you know, could easily soon be condemned is probably a dozen. The number of those that are occupied is most of them, as opposed to ones that are abandoned. We have a couple of abandoned houses. And that's it's kind of a similar situation, because this would really just benefit, you know, the person involved, but also benefits their neighbors for a variety of reasons.
Yeah.
Which is sometimes why the health agent gets involved.
Yeah.
We had, we've had recent reports from neighbors about rats, for example.
Yep. Okay.
Something we've had before.
These abandoned houses, Tom, huh? Can the town take them or?
Well, I, most of them are in tax file.
No.
Okay. There are now problems with the town actually taking ownership, because prior to the recent Supreme Court decision regarding, US Supreme Court decision regarding a case in Wisconsin, the town no longer, if it cleans up the property and sells it, it no longer gets to keep the money from selling it. That goes to the owner.
Huh. How fair is that?
We get, do we recoup our tax lien?
The amount of money we can recoup is still very much in play. There's virtually no case law on it so far. This, this has happened, it happened about a year ago. There's virtually no case law on it so far, this, this has happened, it happened about a year ago.
Yeah.
And it's unclear, I mean, changing the block, yeah, that's easy, that's minor. Doing a demolition is, is much more involved.
And is this something that, I see you, you did list it here. Fund to assist residents to close the gap between CD, BG, rehabilitation in actual need, and fund for cleaning up condemned houses. So is this something you want to pursue this year? And then follow-up question is, have you considered, you know, what this additional position, how many hours, what the cost is for a position?
No, I, I have not had a chance to flesh out what it would mean to have this position. I do know that Chief Stroud is potentially interested in having a social worker position who could also work on mental health calls.
Okay.
So there's, there's some.
Overlap?
There's, there's definitely some overlap there. Patty here does a lot of social work in a, in a very practical way. Not necessarily, you know, trained or dedicated to that work, but helping seniors do a lot of the navigating of agencies that a social worker would also do. So, and that, that's one of the reasons why I why I suggested, you know, if we, if we had a Department of Health and Human Services where the senior center, Veterans Services, the Board of Health, the 500 level accounts, plus perhaps a new position, that, that all of those people would work together as a team to have things happen. The health agent's tremendously interested in getting a hoarding task force together, like the City of Pittsfield has. That's got, you know, a huge number of people on it, there's something like 20 people on their task force. But it really shows the the interconnected, interconnectedness of the problems, and how many different ways, you know, we divide the way we think about the town into a certain number of slices of the pie, but really it's a whole town, and there are whole people, and everybody needs all of the services at some point, so.
Okay.
So that, that was part of it, and, and no, I haven't fleshed it out into a new position that's ready to be funded at this point. On the other hand, I might as well, you know, put it out there now, because it could take a year to, you know, think through the implications of the job description, and go through a hiring process and things like that. You know, it, it could happen, you know, we could, we could approve something and then build it later and have the funding to hire when we were, when we were ready to. I didn't feel ready to bring that proposal to you, but it is an option.
I would say if you have a more firm proposal with dollars attached to the new positions, for example, and the impact in the budget there, it's something that I think we might be able to take action on sooner rather than later, but absent that, maybe it's something for planning for the next fiscal year, or maybe you can identify a dollar amount that we could ask for, and then build it like you said, but.
Just real quick, I like throwing the 20,000 out there, putting that out there, and getting that out there now. I think as far as positions and stuff, I think that's a long term, there's going to be a lot of legwork involved in that.
Yeah.
A lot of stakeholders involved in that, so I do think that that's probably for next year, but I do like getting the 20,000 out there and getting that allocated now that we have that with the free cash, I do like that.
So the 20 plus the 10?
It would be a tremendous amount of work to administer that fund.
Right.
And we don't now have anybody in a position to take that on.
Well, we can, the money, we can allocate the money, it could sit there, correct?
I'm sorry?
We can allocate the money, and it could sit there until we get to that.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
And be ready.
Yes, and that would provide some momentum towards.
Some momentum towards getting it done.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, so, yeah, I'm all in favor of that.
Well, I mean, with that in mind, I mean, I think it makes sense to keep it in the money article requests. If you can further flesh this out and bring more information forward.
And, you know.
Then great, but if we don't have enough time to get that part done, then.
A mid-year hiring is not out of the question either, if it, if it comes together. You know, Mark, to your point of there's a lot of moving parts, oh, yeah, especially with the idea of reorganizing.
Yeah.
The staff here, that's, it, yeah. It involves a lot of people and, and change, so.
Okay.
Anyway, that's, thank you. That was, that was more than, more than I was expecting.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll leave them on for the money articles and maybe future agenda item as you develop.
You know, I would love to move forward with, with fleshing out what a, how it might work.
Okay. All right.
Who would be involved, and what the process would be like.
All right, well, thank you very much. Next up, we have the town manager update.
Yeah. I am moving forward on an item I've mentioned before, and mentioned as part of the money articles, a request for the purchase of an easement which was promised but never followed up with on Lucetonic Street. The plan should be done sometime in the first couple of weeks of March. It will then need to be appraised, for which I'm getting a quote, I actually spoke with an appraiser today. Another appraisal, or set of appraisals that will have to be done, is a couple of pizzas on Orchard Street needed for drainage. Spoke about that as well, I'm getting quotes from those from the same appraiser. I am, and, and the plans for those are probably going to be ready mid-March, so we should have the numbers in plenty of time for town meeting. I'm almost done with the climate action plan request for proposals, as approved of last year's town meeting. Though I am working, I'm still working with the Green Committee to try to refine it a little bit before sending it out. The Board of Assessors has moved forward with their abatement process, and I'd like to commend them for working through some very complex issues as they cover the requests. They're really doing a good job for the town that way. I also put out the invitation for bids for the website upgrade. Bids are due now, I've extended the due date to Wednesday, March 15th at 2:00 PM. If bids come in above what town meeting voted, depending on how much, we may be able to use the IT budget. I may request a small amount of ARBA funds to cover the difference. Or we may rebid entirely, or ask town meeting for additional funds if they come in too high. I mentioned the Small Bridge Program, $100,000 grant from Bud. Processing the electronic grant paperwork for the Cultural Council grant and the garage insulation grant has been a challenge. But both are finally done, and both projects should be proceeding normally from now on. Way too much time. It's all, it's all being done by DocuSign, and in the middle of it, I started getting phishing attempts with DocuSign. So I had to verify each one that came in, and some of them were spam, and some of them weren't, and they looked the same, and it was, it was a mess. I'm developing the draft warrant, much of it is pro forma, and of course, the warrant does not have money figures. But there are some different items, including the easements mentioned above, and returning money to free cash from unspent borrowing. We're going to clean up the books a little bit, and when we borrow money and we spend it for a project, sometimes there's a little left over. We're going to have a raft of those to put on to say, we're closing that out, we're revoking the borrowing authority for this, and that puts the money back into free cash.
Okay.
If we've already borrowed for it. So, and, and that's, that's the whole point of that, I'm working with Sandy on that. And that's what I have for tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchison. Future agenda items, we've got a few things on the list here, I don't know, anything to add?
I don't have anything, Tom, can you just find out when they're going to do like the recyclable, the paint stuff, come back in, in Pittsfield, or whatever, whatever group we go to?
Yeah.
I had, I had somebody reach out to me today, asking if I could find out what the date will be in the springtime.
Hazardous Waste Collection.
That's it, actually.
Yeah.
The, the paint recycling?
The hazardous waste.
Collection Day.
Hazardous Waste Collection, sorry. Yeah, there are sort of two different items.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. It may be on the transfer station website, but if it's not, I'll find out when it is and make sure it gets up there.
Thank you.
Yeah. The only other thing I would mention is this second public meeting for the hazard mitigation plan. We had said, maybe March, do we want to put that on March 11th to decide a date, or? Are we ready?
We are having a call this week.
Okay.
An interim call with the, oh, no, sorry, that's the, that's a different plan, that's the municipal law.
Okay. Yeah.
I think we're planning to have another HMP call for the public meeting, but I'll check on that too.
Okay. If, if you need the board to set a date for that or make a decision, just put it on the next agenda.
Yeah, sure.
That's the only thing I would mention on that. Anything else, gentlemen?
Just to say, I know, I looked at the website, and there is a schedule for the household hazardous waste day, it's due on Northern Berkshire Solid Waste District, and it looks like it's going to be in Adams.
Okay.
On April 25th.
Well, thank you.
Adams. All right, so if we can get more information about that out, and then maybe even include it on the announcements when we're getting closer, and we can read them for the benefit of those listening at home or after, okay. Items not anticipated 48, 48 hours before the meeting. I do not have anything for that. Anyone else?
Nope.
No, okay. Remarks of the select board?
I have one.
Sure thing.
I'd like to congratulate the Titanic Co-op Hockey Team, which is a combined of seven high schools, they won Western Mass this past weekend.
Whose grandson, whose grandson put on that team?
I can't say nothing, but I do.
That's awesome.
But there's members of Kona on that team, and Mount Gerilock, Lee, Lennox, Ray, Berington, and Eagleton.
Wow.
There's all, very, some melting product kids there.
Well, congratulations to, to them, absolutely. All right. And announcements, annual car permits, bag stickers, and recycling-only car permits are available for purchase at the transfer station and on the town's website. There are numerous committees and boards with vacancies. Please see the town website for more information, or reach out to the town manager's office. Is your electricity bill too high? The town has contracted with Colonial Power to provide an electricity plan for town residents that takes advantage of joining with other communities to have a larger customer base for negotiations, which has resulted in prices lower than current ever sourced prices. Please note, this may not always be the case. For more details, or to opt in or opt out, visit the town's website, or call the town manager's office. The Dalton Police Department would like to remind residents of the winter parking ban, which is in effect from November 15th through April 15th, 2024. There will be no parking allowed on streets between these dates and between the hours of 1:00 AM and 6:00 AM. The Department of Public Works would like to remind residents to remove basketball hoops in the roadway, as well as ones that overhang the roadway between the dates of November 1st, 2023, and April 15th, 2024. The next meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, March 11th, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the Senior Center, with an option for remote participation. And with that, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, Dalton, thank you.